Are you all set? Yep. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order and just to ensure for the record, we're gonna do a roll call. So if members of the board, I note that many of you have your mics muted. You'll have to unmute to say aye or just indicate that you're here. Anita?
Aye.
Lou? Lou, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Lorna?
I'm here.
Jenny?
Yes, I'm here.
Bill? Bill is phoning in. Bill, are you there? Can you hear us? I'm not sure how that works, Dean or Damian, but maybe we could figure that out, how we can be sure that we hear Bill. Megan?
Yes, I'm here.
Hayden? Not yet? Tanner?
I'm here.
Okay. Thank you very much. So then with a quorum present, we can call the meeting to order. Just, I mean, as far as I'm aware, maybe someone else has a different sense of history, but this is the first time that the board has done a virtual meeting like this, I believe. And since it's a break from that tradition, I wouldn't like to break too much from tradition and I would suggest that we do a virtual pledge of allegiance, if we can do that. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think I'm doing that in part because I think it's a way to make sure that, to draw people into the meeting, to kind of center people. So item 2.0 on the agenda is to approve and amend the minutes from the February 24th meeting. Vita had sent those around initially a while ago, she believes, but sent them recently this afternoon. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at those minutes and review them? Any comments, corrections?
No.
No.
No? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. That was February 24th, 2020.
Thanks. Okay, we have a motion by Lorna, a second by Lou. We'll have to do a roll call to get everyone recorded, so we're gonna do that again. Anita?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Lorna?
Yes.
Jenny?
Aye.
Bill?
Excuse me just for a moment. Bill, you have to hit star six to unmute your phone. I apologize for the interruption. Star six.
Okay, Bill, are you with us?
I did that. Can you now hear me?
We can. Yeah?
Okay, good.
So we have, we need your vote on the approval of the minutes?
It was a yea.
Okay. Megan?
Yes.
Hayden? If he's not joined us yet? No? Tanner?
Aye.
And I'm a yes on that. Okay. And again, for the record, and we do have one public member join us, Allison Heffler joined us, I believe. I just want to make a couple of statements regarding the meeting. I'd like to make sure that the record reflects that this meeting will be recorded and it's going to be available later in the week for viewing on the school website for those unable to attend the virtual meeting. We're asking, that's number one. Number two, we're asking that only board members and presenters speak. Members of the public are asked to keep your microphones muted. There will be a public comment portion of the meeting and comments. We ask that comments be emailed into Vita by 12 noon today. As I think you all know, we received one public comment and Patrick faxed that out to everybody and I'll read that one comment during the public comment section on the agenda. If a technical performance of the conference begins to deteriorate, whether, you know, some people are experiencing poor video or the sound becomes garbled or interrupted, Dean and Bob and Damian suggested one way to address that is that you turn off your camera or mute your mic and then just listen to the audio portion. Hopefully that won't be the case because there aren't many people on the meeting. We're not going to use the chat function. I would ask if folks would like to comment or have questions or comments to make, if you do it, do it through me, through the chair. Just ask that I recognize you and I'll do it, just to keep things orderly so people don't talk over each other. And as we just did, votes will be taken by roll call. So there are two or three action items, well, at least two action items on the agenda and we will address those. When we get to those, I'll ask for a roll call. Okay. Item 3.0 on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Patrick, do you have any adjustments?
Yeah, we just had two. One was the consideration of the 2021 proposed school calendar. And the other one was a, just an FYI, a resignation of a staff member.
Okay. Why don't we make the school calendar item 7.1 on the agenda? And the resignation will, that personnel item will make 7.2. Anything else, Patrick?
No, that's it.
No? Okay. Okay. Item 4.0, and that's our public comment period. And again, Danielle Bailey sent in a, it is a question, but I think more looking for some advice, some guidance, and I'll read it into the record. So again, this was submitted by Danielle Bailey. And she states, although I don't believe our kids will or should be, or should return, or should, well, I'm gonna put a B in there, or should be returning back to school on the 26th, will they, will there be resources available for parents such as myself who don't want to send their kids back? I think Patrick and Katie and if Tim makes a public presentation, Tim will certainly be addressing what the district's plan is going forward, what our response has been to date and what our plan is going forward. But I think we can in general assure the public that the district will meet its mandate to provide educational services to the children of this community. It might not be in a classroom, it might be through remote continuation of remote learning. And that may take different forms, technology, hard packets going out to families, but I think our parents and our families and the community generally should be assured that we will provide resources to continue educational services to all youth in the community. We can talk about that again when we get to Patrick's presentation, I think, and other board members may want to make comments along that line. Item 5.0, district update. And this is all yours, Patrick and Katie and whoever else you got lined up. Again, Patrick, can I just ask, are you, is it possible for board members to interrupt you at times to take questions or would you prefer that you and Katie get through the presentation and that the board answer to the discussion after the presentation? How do you want to do it?
No, I mean, interrupting anytime is fine. I'm gonna actually have Katie lead off with just providing an overview of, for K to eight around remote learning and then at the high school level. And then after Katie's done, any questions you might have about the remote learning and then ask Tim to come on and talk about the, you know, the feeding that we've been doing for students and families.
Okay.
So Katie, I'll let you go, but board members, you know, please unmute yourself and interrupt us as we go.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Pardon me looking down sometimes, I'm holding my notes. I know I can usually make better eye contact when we're in person. So I'm sure some of you have seen this and I know that this is on our website, but just to make sure everyone is in the know, after the two-week period ended, where we initially thought we would be closed, we slightly changed our approach to make it more structured and less optional for families to ensure that we were doing exactly what Steve, you were just saying, which is support students as best we can educationally through this distance learning opportunity. And so teachers and students now have some set expectations that they're all following. For K to eight, what that looks like is about one to two hours of academic work in math, literacy, social studies, and science during the day. They also are provided an opportunity to do a special. They are supposed to move every day, continue their physical education, whether that's playing outside or doing something with a brother or a sister, whatever they can do. And our special features are also creating the lessons to send out to families. We're doing as much of it through digital learning. The technology department did an amazing job of getting laptops out to those who needed it in K to five. And so we really can provide students with more engaging and more updated information that doesn't put anybody's safety at risk to have to come in and make packets, the more we can do online. So for all of this work that I just spoke of, K to eight, teachers have provided a schedule for families that students should be following with links, directions of how to basically get their hands on this information or connect in the places they're supposed to connect to. And over the course of a week, for K to eight students, like I said, it's one to two hours a day or six to eight hours a week. We're really promoting though, more so than academics, even though this is cool, that this needs to be a first and foremost, a moment to connect with our families and with our students, given the isolation that many, in the hardship many families are experiencing. That's really the first thing that we want to make sure teachers and support staff are trying to do. So the one online part where teachers and students are connecting at a certain specific time every week is a Zoom or a hangout meeting, similar to the one we're doing, where kids are checking in, they might be doing something fun, like having a morning meeting type of conversation, playing a game together, getting questions answered, just getting to see one another's faces and keep up relationships. We also have teachers and support staff contacting families and kids at least once a week outside of the classroom expectation, just to make sure that everybody's getting questions answered and getting what they need. So that's K to eight. Any questions specifically about that first before I go into how the high school differs slightly?
Katie?
Yes.
Could you just repeat, please, what the expectation is for the connection between classroom teachers and students for K? Was it once a week for a classroom-like meeting?
Once a week for a half an hour is the minimum that teachers are doing. I would say in person. They're often connecting through phone conversations, other one-on-one meetings they might have with a student or through email, but of the set time that happens weekly, there's one meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah. Katie, just a question, is there, is there any particular, can you identify, or is it, is there any particular group of students that we are perhaps is the most problematic to serve at this point? Thinking of our low-income thing, you know, our free lunch kids, our low-income kids, are you comfortable that we're able to overcome those, you know, issues that we certainly hear about a lot, you know, concerning connectivity and familiarity with technology on the part of families, et cetera, to make it, to make the learning experience whole?
Yeah. I think the ones that we're worried about, no matter their financial status, are people who don't have internet because it is harder to connect. So much of what we're doing is through the computer. And so Dean and his folks have done a great job of putting together documentation on how to get reduced price, reduced price, pardon me, internet or giving them all the spots in the area where they could go to, walk to, drive to, to get the free Wi-Fi outside of a building. And so those are the ways we've been trying to kind of get around that problem. I've been really encouraged that all of our principals have a list that they're working on with their support staff of which kids in their entire buildings have been connected with and not. And then they have been sort of really persevering to make sure that that list gets down to zero and that every family has been reached in whatever way possible. And so in some schools, that's already happened and in some few schools, it's just a handful of students left that we haven't been able to reach. But we're getting, we're getting very creative with that. So I feel good about that.
Does the technology, you know, allow us to, to know how long students are logged on to the computer?
Some platforms do, some don't. And that's one thing we've also been checking with students and families about or getting feedback on and adjusting. I know that Eric just sent out an email to staff, I want to say it was last Friday, and say, you know, depending on how much, what feedback you're getting, we want to be really responsive, given the climate of how stressful it is just to be a person in the world without school to do at home. And so if kids are telling you it's taking them a long time, then this is the moment to listen in and adjust and that that's actually really good practice in the climate that we're in, so.
Any other, any other board members with questions for Katie on this?
Okay. So I'll go into the slightly different for the high school. Obviously, you know, with older students, stakes are slightly higher because we're talking about courses they're enrolled in, credits they need to earn and whatnot. And so it made the most sense at the high school level to actually have a set schedule where students were getting class a few times a week. They have Wednesdays off, but a variation of their normal schedule in the mornings on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday in half an hour increments. For teachers who also might have their own kids at home that they're having to homeschool, they have the option to either pre-record their lessons and post them or they can do them live. So that's happening in a couple different ways. Or they might find a really great YouTube video, for instance, that a teacher in California did on the same type of lesson and posts that. And so we're getting creative in the ways we're teaching this new learning. At the high school, the hours are slightly increased just because of that age level and it's anywhere from nine to 13 hours across the week, so for classes. In terms of just some of the other details that I was thinking you all might want to know, and then we can do some more questions, is, I know I've already talked about this balance between checking in on students' wellbeing and academics and that's something that we're taking very, very seriously. And that goes out even to how we're approaching grading. Given how stressful a time and what an adjustment this is for everybody, at the K to eight level, grading is just a habits of work effort grade. And at the high school level, it's also habits of work or a formative assessment grade, which is sort of a category of less impactful grades within a grade book. So if a student isn't able to do the work, it won't have a huge impact on how they're doing, essentially. That's how I would describe that. Also, just to know, the state, if you hadn't heard, did cancel all state assessments. So SAT, the MEA, all the MEA testing for the lower grades. The only one that will still be taking place, the AP exams will be happening. They are happening virtually or digitally from computers in students' homes. They're going to be much shorter and much more directed and they have done a good job so far of getting out practice information and other updates to teachers as fast as they create it because this is all new for them. But our AP coordinator and Eric and Amber at the high school have all been updated on that as soon as we get information. So we're contacting families, you know, as we find things out. So what other questions do you have for me?
Questions for Katie?
Katie, I just wanted to provide a comment. I'm sure we're all thinking the same thing, but I just want to thank you and staff and IT and just everyone for pulling this off in just such a short amount of time and then adapting as you get more information on extended closures and I just want to thank you for that. It's noticed.
I have never been more impressed with a group of staff in my life, really. I mean, they, the amount that teachers and support staff and technology folks are putting into pulling this off is so incredible. Honestly, it's heartwarming. And I've gotten the most lovely emails from teachers about their Zoom meetings with their classes and how fun it is and how excited the kids are and also how some teachers and principals have been really surprised with who logs on at the meetings, people that you wouldn't necessarily in your classroom expect to see. And I think that that really speaks to how in a crisis like this, people crave interaction and connection. And I'm really glad that that's the approach we took, the balanced one, of trying to make sure that we are making sure, kids are learning still, but equally as important, it's just making sure that they feel good, that they're getting outside, that they see faces that they know, that they feel cared for, even if it's from a distance. And so I appreciate your comment. I really am so, so glad we have the staff we have. They're doing an amazing job.
Katie, Katie Oldman Perkins, I'm in awe of what has been accomplished and I'm so darn proud to be associated with this district.
Yeah.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. They're doing awesome.
Yeah, it's really, it's really good work seeing it. I'm hearing from a lot of people that it's, you know, working well, certainly my kids are connecting well and glad to see that. Just, I know you can't answer this now, you and I talked a little bit about this before, but we're then waiting to see what the state's gonna do for longer term, just as, because I know parents are gonna want to know and about certain grading concepts. Obviously, you're looking at, everything's in flux. So we're looking at later this month when we have a better idea of if we may be returning or not returning to actual classroom. Then we would be making a decision on, a firmer decision on what those grades in the high school anyway would look like, right? That's what.
Correct. So.
Just wanted to be clear because I know people are gonna, after this meeting, be asking, so.
Yeah. And I would say, I feel good, Eric and I talked a bunch about it today, actually, Lou, after you and I spoke, on the computer. This is the first on a lot of the curriculum and assistant superintendent lists serves that happen when people share ideas. This is the first time, so this is week four of this, where people have started asking some of these bigger questions about high school grades, for instance, and are starting to throw different ideas around. And I was encouraged to see that what Eric and the administrative team and I had been speaking of possibly doing, you know, a different version of how we grade now, so it's really fair for students and equitable for those who can access and who can't, are the ideas that are also being tossed around by other districts as well this week. And so we'll probably have an update for you soon. We've been trying to hold off because if we really do come back on May 1st, which we have no idea, we're gonna follow what the state tells us to do, then, you know, we could continue with our same grading system. If the state potentially extends how long we're doing distance learning for, it would be more important to adjust what we're doing right now because obviously we can't grade in the same way we have been because school looks so different, so. I wish I had more detail.
Thank you for clarifying that because I just think that helps. Because again, it's not that, I don't think people are expecting firm answers, they just know that you're looking at all the possibilities and as things develop, we will do what is best and most fair for everyone involved. And I just think, I just want that to be out there and clear because that's how you've been handling everything so far and it's, you know, I'm very happy to see that and just, you know, thank you for addressing that. Thank you.
I think the commissioner also had made some pretty cogent statements, I think, in some of the stuff that she's put out, that we have to look at this experience through a different lens than the traditional, than the lens that we're used to using when we think about education, you know, and what, and the schools. We don't really know what the measure of success is going to be with this three weeks going into another month, I guess, right?
Right.
Of the experience. And there are successes here, we don't know how to measure them yet. We don't, we don't even know, we haven't even settled on what those metrics are going to be, but I think we should all be confident that our teachers and our administrators are doing what it takes to get the most out of this period of time that we can, you know? We're not going to replicate, we're not, we shouldn't even think of replicating what would have resulted had the kids been sitting in the classroom.
Right.
For this six-week period. We've got, and parents and others in the community need to, I believe, need to think that way as well.
Yeah.
It's different, we should look at it differently, we should measure it differently, we should look for our successes and measure our successes differently. The other thing that the commissioner said, again, in one of her, I think, one of her releases, or maybe not, maybe it was someone else, that this is also an opportunity for people to, there's an opportunity presented here for people to realize what the schools really do, you know? I mean, a lot of our focus has been on feeding, you know? I mean, Tim hasn't come up yet, but he will be, you know, we're looking at that. Katie, I think, just touched on other things. This social dynamic that goes on in the classroom that is now missing, we're trying to replicate that, you know? We're seeing the importance, perhaps a little bit more clearly, of getting kids to communicate, to interrelate and looking for ways to improve those kinds of contacts. So this is, you know, I'm not sure that, of its origin, but I've always been told that the Chinese proverb, that the word for crisis and the word for opportunity are very similar. And I think in this crisis, we have. And, and I think in this crisis, we have to look for opportunities and move forward. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Katie on this?
This is Jennifer. I have one more question. Katie, along with the grading system, would that also be like the potential of providing class standing? Are those still going to be important for our graduating seniors in terms of colleges and things like that? Is that class standing a concern for people, do you think?
It, it's something that we haven't yet talked about either, but I think, given that colleges themselves will be dealing with the exact same thing.
Yeah.
That people will just have to be a lot looser in what they look at for college applications now, knowing what the whole country has gone through. So I can make sure that Eric and I give you all an update on that as well.
Okay. And I would agree with Steve and everyone else, social, emotional, education and support that we're providing. We're realizing how crucial that is, along with the academic. And I heard many, many parents and children saying how important it is to be able to see their classmates and see their classroom teachers, and how that really helps, helps our students in so many ways besides just academics.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Katie. I mean, you know, we also have, I mean, Lorna, I know Lou, Megan, you have kids in the system. So I know you experienced many things that, that other board members, myself included, don't, don't really see on a day-to-day basis. But I'm glad that you've added the comments that you have to the record in terms of a hands-on reflection of what our staff and administrators and teachers have been able to do during this period. Thank, thank you, board members, for those comments.
Hey, Steve. Hey, Steve. It's Pat. Can I just, a couple of things of questions that I've gotten from a few people?
Sure.
Is just, I would just echo, though, our staff. I mean, the professionalism, flexibility, and just the caring approach, and what, like Jen just said, you know, not only do we have our staff just teaching the academics, but that social, emotional, and just overall well-being. The feedback that we've received so far, the positives, I guess, would be about routine schedule and continuity of learning. And then the negatives are just, you know, some families reaching out and talking about the stress and overload that they have on their own family. And we're doing our best to support them and accommodate them. And for those students that it's harder to connect with, it is harder for our teachers, because usually you can walk over and put your, you know, your hand on somebody's shoulder and get them to focus, or to try to motivate them or encourage them. And it's much harder when you're trying to connect digitally. So those are the challenges that, that we still have. A couple of other questions I just wanted to put out there is, people have asked about, mostly about senior activities, prom, graduation, all of those things. And, you know, my philosophy is we're playing this day by day, week by week, and hopeful that we'll be back for end-of-the-year activities. You know, I wish I had the answer. I don't. With the governor's last statement, we would be back on May 4th. But our goal is, is the week before April break is to hopefully make an announcement, you know, for a longer, well, if it's going to be a longer period of time, we would know hopefully by that time. So, and just a couple other things is, we are, we have been talking about summer programming for our extended year services, but also possibly offering something optional to our younger students that have missed direct instruction. So I think the door is open for other opportunities. And last but not least, maybe this technology will, we won't have to have any more snow days in the future. So.
True, true mind, Mr. Manion.
There's one plus.
And one other thing is, Tanner, you're on the line. I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have a perspective of how your online learning is going so far?
Yeah. It's definitely, teachers are, are very friendly and accommodating for when you can and can't join in on a lesson. And it's, it's super friendly. It's not a harsh environment, which is, makes it a lot easier and more relieving as a student.
Yeah, you look relaxed. Okay, any, any, I guess Tim is going to come on next. Is that right, Patrick?
Yes.
Any, any questions for Katie? We don't, we're not going to lose her if you think of anything.
Yeah, I'll be here, and I'm, I'll go over the calendar in a little bit, too. So you think of anything, you can ask me then.
Yep. Okay. Tim, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me all right?
I think so. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So I'll just give you a brief overview of what we've been able to do leading up to the closure on the 16th. That weekend prior, Patrick and I, this is March, Patrick and I had some discussions about what the feeding program would look like if we were to close down. At that point, we really didn't have any guidance from the state. But by March 17th, we had four sites up and operating. We had service, both a bag breakfast and a bag lunch at Dyke Newell, Fisher Mitchell, Phippsburg, and Woolwich. By the 18th, we brought two buses online to serve students in high-risk areas who had food insecurity issues within Bath. By the 24th, we had buses up and running in, a bus up and running in Phippsburg. And by the 26th, we had a bus up and running in Woolwich. The model that we're operating under now is the summer food program. We're not operating under National School Lunch Program. So the meal requirements are a little different. The presentation is a little different. We've been told, we were told initially that we would only get reimbursed, and it's based on certain calculations in free and reduced and census data, but that we would only be reimbursed for meals that were served at Dyke Newell and Fisher Mitchell. Since then, there have been some developments. This came towards the end of March, getting into the first of April. And I think that not only will the bus routes be reimbursed, but we will also get, going forward, we will get reimbursement for Woolwich and Phippsburg. The challenges that we face really fall into two categories. It's, it's executing the program, you know, being able to purchase the food that we need, manage the inventories, you know, prepare the meals as they're required by the federal government, do the distribution, manage inventories. We want to watch out for, you know, spoiled product or food that's been sitting around for a while. But the other part of this is, is for me and for my staff and the volunteers, is managing people's anxiety, keeping people safe, and trying to target where their needs are. So trying to keep, you know, a safe working environment, keeping outsiders from our kitchens so that we don't have food safety issues or sanitation issues. And that's been a real challenge. From the get-go, we've had certain staff that have chosen not to work, either because of health conditions that they have, maybe because of their age. We've also lost some folks because they now have children at home and they don't have childcare. So they've had to go back, you know, home to take care of their kids, or to participate in the online learning process. But I think that we have a program now that is manageable and sustainable through the, through the long haul. Up to date, we've done over 7,200 meals. We're doing approximately 400 meals a day, but our big days are about 800 meals. Our school sites are now just operating on Tuesdays and Thursdays, because we got a waiver from the state that allows us to provide students with multiple meals on any given day. So for instance, if a parent comes in and we are now allowed to give meals to parents for their kids, it had, prior to that, it had been, we had to give to the kids themselves. But if a parent comes in, we can give them two breakfasts or two lunches to carry them through until the next day that we're, you know, that we're operating. That generally sums up what we're doing. The buses are running in Bath Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And Phippsburg and Woolwich, those buses are running Tuesday and Thursday. And a lot of those decisions have been made based upon what the community needed and what really worked best for the staff that's working at that site. So without going into a lot more detail, I'll, I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions of, of Tim? I, I just have, just a couple. That, those, those 400 to 800 meals a day that you decide, how does that compare with your, your normal? How many students, how many students do you think we're not reaching, I guess is the question?
I, I think, you know, the way that we have looked at it is, we can't be all things to all people. You know, my kids, for example, ate lunch at school, at Morris High School. They're now home. You know, I have a job. I have transportation. I have the ability to go to the grocery store. They don't need a meal from RSU One. I can provide them with a meal. We're really trying to target those families that, without being specific, that perhaps those that were free and reduced, or that may have food insecurity issues. When we looked at the bus routes, we really looked at where there was need, both in Bath and in Woolwich and Phippsburg. We're really trying to identify the folks that, that need the food. So for instance, when we were operating normally, we would do 400 breakfasts a day and just shy of, of 1,000 lunches a day. But for example, you know, I was looking at some numbers last week. In Woolwich, the number of meals that we're serving, it almost corresponds to the number of free and reduced kids that we have in that community. And now, it's not to say that all free and reduced kids are getting a meal, but we're pretty close to hitting those, targeting those in need. And through social media, through phone calls by administration, through input from bus drivers, we've been able to tailor routes and service to target those who, who are most in need.
Yeah. You have, you have volunteers on the bus, you know, maybe for, for those of us who don't experience it directly, how, how does the bus delivery work?
So the way it works is, for the buses in Phippsburg and Woolwich, those meals are produced at those schools. In Bath, I'm using Morris High School and Bath Middle School as sort of a central kitchen. All those meals are put together ahead of time. They're all bagged up. They're all labeled. They're dated. They're put in containers. The buses show up around 10:15. We get the buses loaded with a certain amount of breakfast and lunch. We get them on the road by 10:30. And then I meet, after I've loaded the buses and get them on their way, I stay in touch. If they need additional meals, I get them additional meals. If they have meals left over, we move them to wherever there's need. I may move them back to the central kitchen. I may move them to Dyke Newell, could move them to Fisher Mitchell, depending upon where we need the product. The buses, I usually have two to three people on the buses. They're typically, in most cases, they're staff within the district, ed techs, teachers, special teachers. Occasionally, we have some community volunteers. But I, it's funny, I've had to be sensitive to the staff that I have working on the buses, because they don't want to see a lot of different faces showing up. They want to minimize the amount of contact that they have, both with the outside public and the people that are working on the buses. We did have one, we had one volunteer who had had contact with someone who tested positive, and they were quarantined for a couple of weeks. I have had some of my staff people, now again, these are, these are women in their mid to late 60s who have existing health conditions, who have been concerned about the contact that they're having with the public. And as I say to people, you know, I'm working with a bunch of 60-year-old first responders. While everybody rushed out of the building, my staff was rushing back in. And they're not always prepared mentally for the anxiety of, you know, handing out multiple lunches, having contact with children and parents, having people crowd around where they're serving. And we've really tried to manage that as best we can.
Yeah. That's great. They don't always get the recognition that they deserve for, for what they, for what they put into it. So excellent. Thanks, Tim. We're, we're very lucky to have you on staff. Our decision, or your decision two or three years ago seems to, seems to be paying off in aces this year. So thank you for what you're doing and working. Any, any questions of Tim?
Just I heard, I told him early on that I had every confidence, and he, he was uptight and deserved to be at that point in time. But he's, he's taken it and run with it, and his staff is performing brilliantly. And I just want to thank him.
That's my pleasure. I, I really think that, that, you know, the thanks go to my staff, because again, I think we all are managing this global situation differently, and we all are experiencing different levels of concern and anxiety. We all experience it when we go to the gas station or the supermarket. And to ask my staff to basically volunteer their time to come in, prepare these meals, hand these meals out on a daily basis, it takes a lot of courage on their part. And it's not courage that, that they, they didn't necessarily know that they had it. And some of them just have not been able to do it, and, and others have risen to the occasion. But it's, it's been remarkable, because I, I couldn't have done it without, you know, my staff, I just couldn't have community folks working in those kitchens. The long-term effect might have been negative. And, and they've really, the ones that are working right now, they're doing an incredible job.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Tim. Any, any comments? Lou, do you want to say anything more on this?
No, I was just saying that, you know, thank you. And you're absolutely right. And thanks for speaking so eloquently about your staff and highlighting them, you know, with your management and their, their output. It's, it's incredible. It's just an incredible thing happening every day in these incredible times. And, you know, we're so appreciative. Thank you very much.
Okay, we, we will have an opportunity, you have a continued opportunity to, to ask questions of Katie or Tim. They're going to stay on for the whole meeting. But we do have a couple of action, well, we can, we can bundle these together. An action item that comes up here, the Department of Education, DOE, has asked districts to record a vote in support of the, their district's plan, strategy, as, as it deals with remote learning and with this food service, this feeding issue. You receive, Patrick sent around, I think it was yesterday, a, a list of communications that, that the central office has sent out to teachers, some, some communication with parents. Hopefully, everyone received that. There are two items on, on, on this list that, that I would like to record a vote of the board. the board, a supportive vote of the board, but of course, you may, you may choose not to vote in support, but that's my, my hope. One item would be, it, it appears sort of in the middle of the first page. Did everyone receive this printout or this email and, and list from Patrick? Did anyone not get it? Okay, so I'm assuming everyone did. So about halfway down the list, there's an item that's referred to as the updated meal plan with additional bus routes. And that document constitutes the district's strategy to, to approach the feeding concerns and issues that, that Tim just, just addressed. And then about three quarters of the way down the, down the page, there are two items, the K through eight parent letter dated March twenty-fifth, and the nine through twelve parent letter dated March twenty-fifth. And, and those identify and define our, our learning strategy as it was conveyed to the community, to the parents, and, and to the, to the faculty. So those, those three documents, the updated meal plan and the K through eight parent letter, and the nine through twelve parent letter, would constitute this, the RSU One's plan to deal with the, the remote learning issues that we're faced with over the last three weeks or so, and, and for this next month. So I'm gonna ask for a motion.
So I'll, I'll move, I'll move that the RSU One strategy as stated, be voted for approval until such time as the administration needs to come back to us with either a modification of or change in the plan going forward.
Okay, I'm not gonna repeat that, hopefully Vita got it.
I second it. I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Lou, a second by Bill. Any discussion? We, we are essentially just communicating to the Department of Education at this point that these three documents constitute our strategy, our approach to remote learning, and, and we're recording our support for, for that plan. No comments or discussion, okay? So I'm gonna, again, do a roll call to get everyone's vote on this. Anita?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Lorna?
Yes.
Lorna?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Jenny?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
No? Okay.
Yes.
You're, you're a firm.
I agree, aye.
Oh, you aye, okay, okay. You threw me off, Megan.
Sorry.
Hayden's not here yet, I guess, Tanner?
Aye.
Aye, and, and I vote aye as well, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, item six point oh. This, this is the, constitutes the, the first reading of the budget. This was originally scheduled as a March twenty-third public meeting, which did not happen, so it appears on our agenda here. Patrick, this is your discussion.
Yeah, I'll just start with a, a brief overview, and then let Deb chime in, and then answer questions that you might have. But each year, as you know, administrators gather input from staff members within their respective cost centers for both non-labor and labor requests. And each administrator meets with Deb and I to conduct a line item review of their proposed budgets. And then the administrators meet with you, the finance committee and board, to provide you with an overview of their goals, priorities, and also another line item review of their budgets. So the budget process reflects the work at the school and district level to ma- maintain our commitment to the teaching and learning process, to meet requirements set forth by the state and the federal level, and to further the district's education plan. And we obviously try to continue to provide the best education possible while being cognizant of the significant commitment made by taxpayers to support our programs, services, and the facilities. So tonight is just the introduction of the 2021 proposed budget, and just two highlights. One is that we've received approximately five hundred thousand more in state subsidy this year than last year. At the same time, a significant increase in the budget is approximately three hundred and sixteen thousand for the first principal payments of the new high school. So I sent you the backup, and I don't know if you have it in front of you, but the proposed budget right now is an increase of three point three nine percent on the local contribution, and three point three seven on total expenses. And the local contribution distribution is as follows. A Rousick would be a four point two percent increase, Bath would be a three point eight nine percent, Phippsburg would be a point seven six, and Woolwich would be a three point eight five percent. And the proposed budget includes the following new positions. English language learner ed tech position for approximately forty thousand dollars, and the vocational ed tech for about the same amount of money, and those the board approved this year. So they're in the budget, but they're not budgeted, so we had to put them into this new budget. One special education ed tech for approximately forty-five thousand. A literacy interventionist at Woolwich for approximately sixty-five thousand. A technology support position for approximately fifty thousand, that's district-wide. A district-wide maintenance support position for forty-five thousand, and a part-time bookkeeper at central office for fifteen thousand. And the last thing we put in there was an indoor track coach stipend at Morse for thirty-five hundred. So I don't think any of those will come as a surprise to those of you that attended the finance committee meetings. And we did go back and reduce non-labor by a certain amount to be able to try to get these positions and still keep it under a three point five percent increase. And we also had some retirements and resignations that we filled, didn't fill or filled differently. And then in the case of the maintenance position, we requested that Dave either not do a few projects or possibly do one out of this year's budget, and to be able to get that. And the technology district-wide support position and the maintenance one have been a need, especially with the new school coming on board, both of those departments, you know, is, you know, a critical piece. So I'll, I'll stop there, and Deb, do you want to add anything at this point?
Um, I don't think so, I think you did a great job.
Sure. So, I mean, we can go into detail, I think if you have your budget sheets there, I'll just add one more thing, and then I'll be quiet and just open it up for questions. But the two biggest cost centers that are up this year is special education instruction and also other instruction, co and extracurricular. And they're both up around seven percent. And the special ed, just real quick, is that we used to have an alternative ed program at Morse, and we don't have that anymore, but we have the behavior support program, so that money shifted into special ed in that case. We also have a social worker that was at last year, in the budget process of the district budget meeting, that social work position was put in under guidance, because that's the, where the motion was made, and that had to be shifted to special education. And then at Fisher Mitchell, we also took a regular ed teaching position and made it a special ed teaching position. And also elementary tuition, special education was increasing this year. So those are the main drivers for that one. And then just really quickly, under other instruction, co and extracurricular, it's not a lot of money, but the two big ones on that were when we added money into the music last year, we put it in salaries, and now it's in more of a stipend, supplies, equipment role. And then the one big change we made in athletics is our athletic trainer.
I'm sorry, Patrick, I'm having a really hard time hearing you. Is there a way that we can mute everybody, and I think somebody's just, the background is really hard.
Okay, now?
It's better, yes, it's better.
Okay. Did you hear the special ed one? You want me just to repeat the co-curricular? Okay. So the, the co-curricular one is really, music last year, we put fifteen thousand dollars in there to help go towards a, producing a musical at Morse High School. And that was put into salaries last year, and now we're bringing it out and putting it into more of a supplies and equipment piece. And then under athletics, our athletic trainer, about seventy-five hundred to eight thousand of that has always been paid by the boosters. And we just felt like the district should be taking that over, and so that's what we're recommending. So those are the two, two biggest increases of our cost centers and kind of the rationale of why they're up, the seven percent that they're up.
Okay, thanks, Patrick. Any, any, any questions, or any questions of Patrick? I, I just have one observation, and I, I, I don't disagree with the priorities that you picked out for your, for your, for inclusion in this year. Just a little bit concerned about the length of the list of priorities that we have identified for year, year two and year three. And I know I've, I've expressed that to you before, Patrick. It, it would be great if, if it were possible to pick something up off either of those two lists, some inclusion, would push us a little bit in this year. And, and I'm not, I'm not asking, you know, I, I'm not asking, I, I know the towns and, and the, and the taxpayers are gonna feel very stressed after we get through this period, but, but just a reflection on, on what we've got, what we've got for priorities for two and three, you know, seem, seem a fairly long list at this point. And, and specific to that, I guess, in year three, the recommendation for a tech integrator for K through five, I, I have, everything I've heard anecdotally and, and reports given in, formally in board meetings, is, is that, again, the, the board's decision and the, and the district's decision to hire a tech integrator for, for, for the high school, Bob Jordan, has, has, has really worked out extremely well. And, and although we, we certainly all hope that, that this experience and experiment in, in remote learning doesn't get, doesn't get repeated too often, but, but I, I do, I did sort of reflect, when I saw that on the list, I reflected whether, whether the district's response in, into this kind of a situation, how, how, how a tech integrator for K through five would, would have changed the district's response. Not, I'm not saying it would make it better, but I'm saying that it would, it would qualitatively change the district's response in some way if we did have that K through five integrator. So I just put that out there, I don't, I don't know if there's a way to get any movement in the budget at this point, but, and, and certainly other board members have opinions on this, and I'll leave it at that if no one else wants to, wants to join in on the conversation.
This is Jennifer, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Jen.
Uh, has, I was just wondering for you and for Patrick, if you've heard any concerns from municipal level on people worried about this upcoming tax bills and property tax, you know, payment in terms of their scarcity of income and unemployment rates? If there's been a sense that there could be, you know, the typical board, we, we keep our budgets down so consistent and so low, and I, I think everyone really appreciates that, I'm worried, I'm worried about how more limited maybe some of this taxpayer dollars are gonna be for families, and I'm just wondering if you, either if you've heard back from that at all.
Jen, I haven't heard anything from anybody recently, I think it's probably people still being kind of shell-shocked by what's going on. I believe Deb did send, you know, our, our draft budget, it's on our website, but we also sent it last week to the municipal offices. But we, I don't, I don't, Deb, I don't know if Deb's received any calls, but I haven't received anything, you know, with concern yet, because I think, obviously, they gotta balance it with, you know, county taxes and their town taxes as well, even though we are, you know, usually the largest part of taxes.
Thank you.
Patrick, my, Mr. Chairman, this is old man Perkins down in Phippsburg. My, my, my concerns at this point in time are, are more global than the local taxes, as important as they are. You know, the word out of Augusta is that there are no taxes pouring in. People, they've closed down all of our hospitality industry, and there's a real concern about the taxes that can be collected this coming spring and through the summer. Are there any rumblings out of Augusta that could jeopardize any of our subsidy, the additional subsidy or anything of that nature? Were, were hearing anything negative?
No, I haven't heard anything negative at this point yet.
Oh, it could happen, though.
Yeah, I, 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 I think, I think that's a possibility. I, I was almost going in the other direction with it, that to the extent that the, the stress and strain of, of, and not talking about RSU One, but talking about school districts around the stra- state, that that stress and strain might, might lead the legislature to consider emergency appropriations.
Yeah.
For education. But, but I think, I think Jenny indicated it, I think Deb, you, you kind of hinted at it too, we're just probably too, too early in that cycle to, to predict how people feel this, this, this shutdown is going to affect.
Right.
Municipal and state finances going forward.
At, at some point, they're gonna sit down with their computers and their spreadsheets, and, and they're gonna start counting, one, two, three, four, and they're gonna, there's gonna be concern there, and I don't want it to impact our kids, that's all. We need to be prepared.
Any, any comments or discussion for Patrick or, or Deb?
I wanted to just chime in on something, and I don't know if it really pertains to a discussion on this budget now, but just sometime last week, I was just looking back and, you know, looking at special ed in particular, and, you know, and I think we are, we try to be so responsive to that population. We've hired thirteen ed techs in the last three years to try to be responsive. And I'm wondering if at some point, the board could have some sort of, I don't know if it's a presentation or discussion on some metrics, where we can really maybe digest not only our understanding a little more about special ed, but, you know, just see if there's any kind of metrics in place to try to get a good handle on, you know, are we putting resources in the best places possible for that population? Or, or are there other ways? Not to suggest we're not being creative, I think we're being really responsive. But thirteen ed techs in three years, and I don't know that it's because our numbers are exploding in special ed, I think the challenges are changing. So that's just one thing I was just gonna throw out there. And then kind of going along with Steve's thoughts on future, on priorities, is MSGT teacher, middle school G T teacher for priority two?
Yes.
Year two, sorry.
Yes.
And so that's, that's just something that, you know, to try to get that other end of the spectrum, to try to support that in the future, would be something that I'd like to see. So those were my two main comments.
Thank you, Lorna.
Thanks, Lorna.
And Patrick, if I could just...
And Patrick, if I could just, um, to clarify, when you're talking about, uh, the increase in the, uh, special ed and you mentioned some of it is due to not new costs, but costs the shift bit, correct?
Yes, some of it is, yeah.
So what's the, do you know what the actual net increase is then? I mean, cause what's actually been increased that wasn't being transferred from some other?
I don't have that right in front of me. I don't know that Deb does either, but we could certainly get back to.
I mean, it would be good, it would be good to know because, you know, when you say it's 7%, it's not really 7% of the whole budget. It's 7% to that department because there's now, you know, there may be a decrease in a different department that it was shifted from. Just to have a, I think a net percentage would, would clarify it somewhat as to what's, you know, the true increase is.
Okay, Deb will get back to us with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
Thank you.
I, I can tell you that there are, um, two positions without the ed techs that are added into that line, but yes, I'll definitely look at the, the total thing, let you know.
Thank you.
I think, I think special ed has been a, has been driving this budget for, for a while, you know? Certainly since I've been on the board, I mean, the, the year to year, uh, the most significant increases we've seen in the budget have come in the special ed, uh, in, 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 in dealing with our special ed costs. I mean, they are mandated costs, um, is, is the way I look at it, but it would, I think, I think it'd be great if we get Justin in and just, and just have that conversation on, you know, are there, and I think the district has been creative. I mean, Pat, you know, Patrick actively pursued, uh, that shared service, uh, arrangement that we're, we're entered into with, uh, with, with Casette and, and I believe that continues, right, Patrick?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. So I mean, we're, we're, we are trying to be creative here and, and I'm, I'm glad that, that, that the board recognizes, um, the fact that it, it, it is, it is driving our budget to, to a large extent. And, and, um, if, if there is a way to deploy those resources in a more, in a more flexible and, and creative way, um, maybe, maybe a discussion with, with Justin might lead to, uh, might lead to some ideas. So, um, that's a good thought, good thought. Any other, any other comments? This is the first, oh, Jenny?
Sorry, may I ask one, one more clarification point? I apologize because the budget materials are so clear, but just to make sure I have a good understanding. We separate out the first, the, um, the new principal payment out of when we're talking about our budget increases. We're talking about the budget without that consideration. Um, it, when is that first payment due? When would that come due? Would that be part of, that's part of this upcoming payment, right? We'd be making a payment on that. And is that reflected in the breakdown per, per municipality underneath that? Or is that just the break, does that breakdown just reflect the, um, three, the 3.37%?
I mean, I'll let, I'll let Deb address this primarily. I think, I think we've done that breakout as a way of demonstrating what the, what the actual growth in expenditures of the district have been unless the debts. So it's, it's an effort for us in terms of communicating to the towns to, to show that we're, we are prudent, we are managing our budget well, that that big debt payment, you know, is due. So this is, this is where we really increase the expenses in terms of services. And then there's that, that big chunk of the debt payment. But Deb, do you, do you want to cover the date and stuff?
The, the first, um, interest payment was in last year's budget and then this year, the first principal payment is in there. So when you look at that front page, I mean, it shows the bottom expense increases 13%, which includes, um, over $3 million for the principal payment, both on the state side and the local side. Now the state is sending the revenue for the state side, but, um, so to answer your question, Jennifer, yes, it's reflected in the allocations by town because it's all included in this bottom line.
Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, so I, you know, when we, when we get around to, uh, item 7.0, which, which is next, we'll talk about the budget timeline. Uh, cause as, as you know, from the schedule, the second reading of the budget falls during the period when we are still on lockdown. And, uh, Patrick, do you want to address this, uh, budget timeline or is that just a?
Yeah, no, I'll just make a couple of comments. I know the, the video and the sound quality is deteriorating, so maybe that's our signal to get done here soon. But, um, our next scheduled meeting is Monday, April 27th. And that's a regular board meeting and also a public forum. And my recommendation would be that we, that we stick with that meeting date, um, even though it's going to have to be another remote meeting, uh, if the board is comfortable with that. And then next, the next, um, public forum or second reading of the budget, um, would be May 4th, which, you know, could be, we could be back in session on that day. But I would say that we would leave, our next meeting would be on the 27th and it would be a public forum for the budget as well as a regular board meeting if you guys are okay with that.
Any, uh, any concerns with that? I mean, we'll, we'll include that as.
That makes sense.
We'll include that when we adjourn. I mean, it, you know, the meeting, uh, you know, the meeting schedule can be changed, but, but for the record, we'll, 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 we'll the April 27th date. Okay, um, 7.1, uh, school calendar. Patrick, Katie?
Katie, you still out there?
Yep, I'm right here. Sorry, I was done meeting myself. Um, okay, so I'm assuming you all have a copy of the school calendar that we're proposing, correct?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to quickly go through, um, so first just a reminder that when we create this calendar, we're checking in with all the other districts, um, and doing it, um, with those that use our vocational center, because we're not allowed any more than five dissimilar days to ensure that students are, um, getting the most out of the 175 days they're supposed to be in school. Um, so that has happened, um, as of right now, looking at the other calendars, we do have the exact amount we're allowed, which is the five days. Um, we are all in agreement about the Thanksgiving, December, February, April holidays. Um, where things differ is, um, when the first day of school is, um, as well as some of the professional development days that the other districts have are slightly different. Um, in terms of how this calendar for us is different this year compared to last year, um, because of what day falls, you probably noticed we have a later start date. Um, and so we'll be starting on, on September 3rd, which is a little bit different than the past few years, although looking at the past decade of calendars, we actually have done this before, um, almost this exact same calendar. Um, and then the only other, uh, big difference is that we will continue to have our October, November and March professional development days that are the three that happen during the year, but the one that is in November, rather than the usual Friday we do, will be on election day as it will be a presidential election and, um, which will be too big of a polling experience to have our schools that are polling sites open. Um, so other than that, I don't think I have anything else, um, that I wanted to make note of and share. Um, I just wanted to take any questions and then we would need to approve it if you feel comfortable now or we can wait till the later April meeting, the board would like to do that.
So any, any questions of Katie? As, as she noted at the end there, we, um, um, we can take this up as an action item tonight or if the folks want, uh, an additional couple weeks to, to look at the calendar and, and get comfortable with it. It, it, it doesn't, uh, doesn't cause us any harm to take it up at the, at the, uh, April 27th meeting.
I, I think the only thing I would add is if you are comfortable voting on it now, I think the other districts would, I don't want to pressure you to do that, but the other districts are waiting on our approval so they can then get theirs approved.
I, yeah, I would, I would say we just vote on it now. I mean, it's not an unusual calendar. It's, everything's, it's always based on how Labor Day falls, so, um, most people I know are happier when it, when we start after Labor Day, right just before that, you know, after their day or something, you know, right in September time slot. So, um, I don't think much is going to change that we know at this point, we cannot just revisit if major things change over the next couple of months, but I, I'd move to approve the calendar before.
I, I just had a quick, I had a question for Katie, Katie, and maybe this is just irrelevant now anyway. My only suggestion without making it busier is very early on, I was wondering, would it do us any good to put the windows that we know of for standardized testing on? And my only goal was to try to minimize in some way extended family vacations or people just kind of leaving or not being around on those weeks? And now it just might be irrelevant anyway because we don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah. Um, I don't know if they've even put out the dates yet. Um, I'd have to check on that, but, um, they don't generally do that until June and so that would happen. We could, we could do that when we publish it on our website and send it out to families. We'd have that by then. We just don't have that now, but that's a great idea or at least post it on our website. So yeah, good idea. We can do something like that.
One small effort for kids not being around.
Definitely.
Okay, how does, how does the, uh, does anyone else on the board have, does anyone on the board have an objection to taking this up as an action item tonight?
Nope.
If not, um.
I'll, I'll second Lou's, I'll second Lou's motion.
Okay, Lou, I'm going to ask you to make the motion again since you.
Oh, okay.
All right, so I'll just, um, I move to, uh, approve the calendar as presented for next year.
Okay, we have a motion by Lou, second by Bill. Uh, we'll do the roll call again. Um, Anita?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Lorna?
Yes.
Jenny?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Tanner?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the, uh, the calendar is adopted. Uh, 7.2, there's a personnel issue you wanted to address, Patrick?
Yeah, just a more of a FYI is just to let you know that Barbara Mills, who is a middle school at BMS, uh, physical education teacher, has, um, provided us with her letter of resignation and would just like to thank her for 26 years of service in the district.
Thanks, Patrick. Um, okay, any, I'm going to kind of go off, uh, go off the agenda a bit. Any, um, you know, Katie and Tim and Patrick, of course, are available anytime to, to answer questions that we might have that come up and, uh, in the interim between meetings. But are there any questions, any more, any, uh, additional questions for Katie or Tim or Patrick regarding the, uh, district strategy dealing with remote learning? Okay, if not, um, I, I'd just like to say, I'm sorry, Tim?
Yeah, it's me. Listen, I just want to let you guys know that, um, if you weren't aware, we are not going to continue, um, our program through April break. I don't know if it was in the documentation you received, but I just wanted to be clear ahead of time that, um, we are going to take that break as we normally would take that break and we'll be back at it after break.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Tim. Thanks. So just, uh, just before we adjourn, I, I just want to say, and, and some members, uh, some board members have, have already raised this and, um, you know, these comments have become so common over the last two or three weeks that it, it's, it's possible that they're not being taken as, as, as being sincere. But, but I too, and, and I think I speak on behalf of the board, want to thank everyone in the RSC1 community, uh, the teachers, the students, staff, uh, families. Uh, I want to thank the towns and the cities for their continued support and, and, um, our, our response, um, has been nothing short of extraordinary, I think. Everyone has put a lot of energy into this. I think that's apparent. I, I'm particularly grateful to the families out there who have, who have pitched in along with the teachers, along with the students to get, to get the most out of this, uh, this set of circumstances as possible. I think, I think many of you are parents. I'm a parent, of course, but I don't have my kids living at home anymore. But, but this is, this has been a, it must be a huge drain on the pandemic. And, and for us to all stay focused as we have during this, uh, during this period is, like I said, nothing short of extraordinary. So I, I just wanted to express that. Um, item 8.0, do I, I need a motion to adjourn?
Think, think, care, act and stay healthy. I move adjournment.
And we got a motion by Bill.
I'll second that. Okay.
All right, second by Lorna. We'll, we'll change it up a little bit here. So we have a motion by Bill, second by Lorna, uh, and again, we're going to do a roll call. Anita?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Lorna?
Yes.
Jenny?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Yep, Megan?
Aye.
And Tanner?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. You're great.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.